It's 5:35 PM on Thursday, January 26, 2023. We're in the Nashua North Boardroom, and this is the Policy Committee of the Nashua Board of Education. I apologize, everybody. We started a little early tonight because there's another meeting in this room, and it has completely gotten me off. And on that note, we do have a hard stop at 6:45 so that the equipment for broadcasting can be switched over for the next meeting. So we'll get through as much as we can get through, and then if we can't get through at all, we'll put it on February, which should be soon. I think it's in like two weeks because it's just the way the month worked out. All right. So this evening, we have Ms. Darling.
Here.
We have Mr. Poska. I'm Heather Raymond, and joining us is Ms. Johnson. All right, so let's dive in. The first -- wait, this is not a touchscreen. The first policy on my agenda is Policy BBA, which is School Powers and Duties. This policy was due to be reviewed under our trying to review everything that is old. As you can see, we haven't touched it since 2008. And when we took a look at it and compared it to other districts and the school board associations recommended, we didn't have any recommendations for changes. Does anyone have any comments or questions on that one? Okay. So I will make the motion to send BBA to the full board.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It seems silly to do that when there's only two voting members right now, but. And all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, 2-0. And the next one is BBAR, which is a list of our specific powers and duties. This came directly from the state law that details the powers and duties of school boards, which I think is Ed. 303. So any comments or questions on that? No?
No.
Okay. So I move that we send it to the full board.
I will second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. The next one is Policy BEAA, School Board Meeting Preparation. Again, this one is from 2007, so we pulled it to take a look at it. At this point, we're only suggesting adding a line regarding emergency meetings. One thing we've learned over the past few years is that occasionally, I think twice in the last five years, we've had to have an emergency school board meeting. And in that case, we try and get out the information as quickly as possible. So go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I was reading this, and it doesn't say how you will get the information to us. Will it be by phone call? Will it be by email? Maybe that should be listed in there so everybody knows how you will be contacting us.
Yeah, I think when we had the emergency meeting to shut down for COVID, at that time, it was phone calls to all of the board members. And then at that point, we only had, I think, two and a half hours' notice before the meeting. And so the materials were handed out to the members when they got there because I think the photocopying was going right up until the time of the meeting. So I imagine it would vary depending on the circumstances. If it was, you know, we knew at 9:00 AM that we needed a meeting for emergency meeting, but everyone couldn't get together till 6 o'clock, there might be time to send out an email and post on the website. But I don't know if we could mandate that if, for example, it was an emergency situation when we simply didn't have time to do it except to hand it.
Well, I think there should be something in here so we have some type of policy so board members would know, and even the public would know, that if there is an emergency, then the administration will try to contact by phone, by email, other ways. So at least people have an idea how we -- or board members know what is the administration's responsibility to contact us.
Okay. I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I like that idea, but I'm wondering if instead of having it as part of this policy, it would be better as part of a board member policy where it states like, this is how administration will contact us. That way, it's just an overall, this is how contact is reached out versus just in an emergency.
I mean, I think we need some -- if we have an emergency meeting, there's a reason for that emergency meeting, and I think we're trying to get that information out as quickly and as efficiently as possible. Even if you look at the -- and I think when we looked at reviewing this, we know it's probably not going to have three days' notice to get some things out, so we're asking for some grace there. But even in that piece there, it does not say how we're getting information out. I mean, it's assumed it's electronically of some sort, but that's not truly detailed in the original policy as well. I think what we're asking for, and I think what, in talking to Ms. Kinsella, is understanding we're going to get the information out as quickly as we can under the circumstances that we have. I'm not quite sure detailing how that's going to happen is going to help us just knowing but understanding that it is coming as quickly as possible.
Yep, I'm just looking at other policies we have that intersect with this one. Policy BEDB is Agenda Preparation and Dissemination. And that one has the procedure for how to get things on an agenda. You know, you submit it seven days in advance, and the superintendent and the chair meet to discuss it. And then it says how we shall follow the order of business. In an emergency, the board may revise policies or adopt new ones. And then this is the policy that says the agenda and materials shall be distributed to board members three days prior to the board meeting to permit them to give careful consideration. And it shall be made available to the press and others on request. And then this policy says, when the agenda has been established, it will be made available to the public via the district website. Supporting materials sent with the agenda are subject to the right-to-know law. And I think that you're getting somewhere with your comments about even in an emergency, we're still subject to the right-to-know law. So it must be posted on the website as soon as possible. And maybe that's what it needs to say, something along that lines, like that -- oh, I pressed the wrong button. That materials will be disseminated. I don't know. Do you have any thoughts for language?
My whole issue is school board meeting preparation, and that it says the three days.
Mm-hmm.
In the event of an emergency, information would come to us as, you know, basically as quick as possible, but it doesn't say how.
Yep.
And I think you need to define that. We have a definition for everything else in the policy. I think a definition probably needs to be there stating that it will give -- this way it gives the administration a couple of options.
Yep.
Either by phone call, by email, carry a pigeon, you know, whatever. But it needs a definition there. How will you be getting in touch with us?
So I think I would recommend that we -- on the line there in red, it says, in the event of an emergency meeting, then perhaps we say, board members will be called by the administration, or board members will be contacted by electronically and telephone. Would that be acceptable?
Should be and/or.
And/or telephone? Okay. So let's say.
I do think that we should, like, write that, but then also keep the information will be shared with the board as efficiently as possible because I think the spirit of the sentence was the --
Yep.
Like, the packets that need to be handed out at the meeting.
It's just adding those words in there so you show how efficiently it will get to us to process here.
Yeah. Hand or by phone. And then I would put a period and then make information will be shared with as the next sentence. And then at the end of that sentence, information will be shared with the board as efficiently as possible, comma, and posted to the district website within 24 hours so that we stay on the right side of the right-to-know law. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Should it just be and posted on the website in accordance with the right-to-know law?
Sure. Yeah.
Ms. Raymond, when you get a chance, could you read that all back?
Yep. I'm going to write in accordance with RSA 91A. Okay. So. Hold on. I just want to make sure I've got the notes proper. So we're going to amend the policy, beginning with the red line where it says, in the event of an emergency meeting, comma, we will add, board members will be contacted electronically and/or by phone, period. And then, starting with the word information, will be a new sentence capitalized, will be shared with the board as efficiently as possible. And then we're going to add, and posted on the district website in accordance with RSA Is that correct, guys? Okay.
Sounds right to me.
Okay. So any other thoughts on this one? Okay. So based on that, I will make a motion that we send Policy BEAA to the full board as amended this evening.
I will second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. And I -- good luck, Ms. Kinsella, reading my notes. All right. Next policy is -- oh, now we get into the nitty-gritty fun ones. Okay, the next policy is IF, Instructional Approach. This policy is also from 2008, and it was due to be reviewed. I don't see any changes here, but it's interesting, so I wanted to hear if anybody had any thoughts on this one. Okay, seeing none, I move that we send IF to the full board as it is.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, me too. 2-0. Next, we have IHAK, Character and Citizenship Education. This policy came to us for a couple of reasons. First, we haven't looked at it since 2008, so it was due to be reviewed. And as we were reviewing it, we discovered that there had been some significant legal changes in the state of New Hampshire that we needed to address in the policy. Mr. Poska, did you wish to speak to this a little bit more because you know the details more than I do?
Sure. I think there's been, as we got into the nitty-gritty of this, there's been some changes that have been included, that have been added to this that occurred in 2017. One of them was pursuant to the Article 83 of the New Hampshire Constitution, but in addition, it was also pursuant to RSA 18613, which includes a piece in there about citizenship. We've had some questions from Ms. Lampier and Ms. Johnson regarding this, where this came from. And if you go into RSA 18613, it really is about appropriation. I think there's some -- a good question that I was not able to find out an answer to in the time of why this was included as the policy. I think there's some really good questions there. My recommendation was to bring it to this board to have some discussion, and if necessary, you know, table this to get some counsel from legal counsel of where this came from, what that's all about.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, did you have further questions, or did you feel like that adequately summed up your questions?
That adequately summed up my questions because I went to the RSA, and I couldn't find anything in there about the rights and responsibilities of citizenship. But if you went to 18911, it basically talks about that more. So my question was, how can we vote on something if we don't know if that RSA is correct and did legal make a mistake or what? Because that's -- when you're referencing an RSA, you've got to really reference it and make sure it's correct in the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And to your point, this is a, you know, I think why, I think it was important that we have this discussion at this meeting is this is a policy that is required by law. So I think to make sure we wrap our own selves around this law, we should probably get some more direction from legal counsel of why that was included, what the why behind including this into the policy.
Okay, yeah, I was just pulling up RSA 18611, and that's regarding the State Board of Education. And so now, I agree with you that this is weird. So let's do some research with the Department of Education and bring this one back. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Definitely. And if I may, once that's fixed and this comes back through and goes to the full board, it's something I really hope that every person, every kid who attends our schools, their parents, their families, all read this. A lot of people are surprised to know we have 30 basic human rights, and this is kind of like just the summary of what the responsibility is of the teachers and administrators. And I think it's important and valuable for all of us to read through and know.
I agree. And I don't -- I stand absolutely by all of it minus the RSA issue for my children. What do you mean minus the RSA issue? Oh, the RSA 18613, too.
But like everything else in here, like this is, if an individual is going to be teaching my child and with my child, you know, more hours of the waking day than I am, this to me is like just a summary of some of the values that get taught. And I think that's just incredibly important to know as a society, what our community is teaching its children.
So yeah, I'm not finding -- I'm finding that it was most recently updated in 2021, but I will follow up on that. So let's -- I'll make a motion to table IHAK pending further research and legal advice.
I will second that.
So we'll bring that back. If not in February, it'll be in March. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. The next one on the list is our Limited English Proficiency Instruction, IHBBA. This policy is another one from 2008. Apparently, 2008 was a very busy year for the board, and then we just didn't keep up with it the way that we should have. So as you can see by the red, there is quite a bit of update on this one because of legal changes. And not to put Reagan on the spot, but I'm going to note for the record that Ms. Lampier has joined us as well. Welcome, Ms. Lampier.
I'm so sorry. I thought the meeting was at 6:00.
Oh, that's okay.
What time did it start?
5:30, but we actually started a little late, so.
goodness.
I'm fine. Just apologies. I have muffins hidden on that chair because I didn't have time to eat dinner, and there's another meeting after this meeting. So we just talked -- I'm just going to back up for a second while you get settled. We just talked about IHAK, which was the citizenship and character and citizenship education. And Mr. Poska let us know that you had some questions about that one.
Yes.
And so we have decided to table it, and we will return to it next month. But if you won't let me know the questions so that I know what to look into, that would be.
Oh, yeah, sure. It was -- so my question was that the clause, the Americanization Clause in, I believe it's 1813, was -- it's named at the end as a reference.
Yep.
But that particular clause doesn't really seem to apply there. And that law has, that part of the law has a lot of clauses, and I'm not really sure why that one is singled out. And it seems like it doesn't really give off the impression that we want of a welcoming and inclusive environment. It seems kind of abrasive. So I was hoping that we could just reference 18913 and not reference that particular clause.
Okay. So I will follow up on that and get an answer. So I'll just make sure I've written it down properly. And then I will bring that back, and we can talk about it. Thank you for your patience in dealing with me. Yeah, I think it's 18613.
Correct.
Too.
Thank you.
That's all right. But when I looked up 18613, I didn't like that either. Like, I didn't feel like it matched well, so I think I'm missing something here. So I will talk to the School Boards Association, and I might send it over to Nicole Clay as well to have her dig into it a little bit because she seems to be really good at that.
Okay.
So IHAK. Okay. So the next policy that we were on is number six, which was regarding our Limited English Proficiency Instruction. And we were just saying that we've had quite a bit of updates to this since 2008. We use a different tool now for state assessments, for identifying and placing children in ELL instruction, and we have a different criteria from the state as to at what point students are able to test out of ELL services. And we have some new certification things that we're doing here in Nashua. What did I miss, Mr. Poska?
You captured everything very well. So then the tool we're now using called the Access Test. So that's something that actually we're just starting next week. All of our students in the district will begin in that, our ELL students be taking that. Students can test out of that if they score a 4.5 on that. There's a rather than a two-year monitoring period, there's now a four-year monitoring period. If you continue going through that, they reference students or ELL students taking the NECAP. We do not use the NECAP anymore. We are now utilizing the SAS test. And at this, at that time, I think it was 2008 when this occurred, there was no science assessment that our students were responsible for taking. So we added on that this ELL students are responsible for, if they've been here for less than a year, they are responsible for taking the math and science assessment. So these updates capture those updates that have been, occurred with some of our ELL policies. This is a policy that is not required, but based upon the work we're doing right now to upgrade and update our ELL work, we feel it's necessary to have this policy continue in with the Nashua.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this policy? Yes?
I just thought it was a real improvement to have the students follow it for four years instead of two, to make sure that they really are doing well in the school.
Thank you. And I just, Mr. Poska, if you could just let the committee know some of the other things that we're doing here in Nashua for ELL instruction regarding certifications and extra PD.
We have a variety of PD occurring right now with ELL. As a matter of fact, I think in, I think April, we were just talking about this, you know, ironically.
Can you put your microphone where you're talking?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, everybody wants to know.
Go from here. We are planning on coming to the Board of Ed in, I believe it's in April. There'll be a presentation by, from Mr. Chopra detailing all the ELL PD that we've been, that has been occurring throughout the year. We had, just to detail a little bit, we had our Professional Development Day in November was geared fully towards ELL, where all of our schools have had an hour of ELL PD for the next four months. So January, February, March, and April, there'll be ELL PD going on in all schools throughout the district. Part of this is because it's good teaching. It is part of a good teaching and learning and instructional strategies for not only ELL students, but all of our students. You know, part of the process to be fully transparent is part of our, you know, the Department of Justice and their recommendations on what we should be doing going forward. You know, we do face some challenges. ELL staffing is a critical shortage need here in New Hampshire and, you know, neighboring states as well. So that is one of the challenges we face. But I think our ELL staff under the direction of Mr. Chopra has made great strides over the course of this year, putting all this professional development into place.
Okay. Great, thank you. I'm excited about it. All right, so I move that we send IHBBA to the full board for approval.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Darling. All in favor of sending IHBBA to the board, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay. The next one is IKC regarding full-time students. We have a lot of red and strike-through on this policy. As everybody knows, we had a lot of work and discussion and discussion with students and task forces regarding class rank over the last couple of years. And so we have updated this policy to reflect those changes. I also asked for a tiny change to add guardian there in the one, two, third paragraph, just to reflect the demographics of our student families better. Any questions or comments on this one? Ms. Johnson?
Class rank is going to be eliminated. So should we put in here the determination, calculating determination of class rank, which will be eliminated at a certain year?
I think what we did was cross out the entirety of the class rank section.
The last line.
Oh, where is it?
Homeschool, foreign exchange.
Oh, yes, you're right. I missed that. Homeschool, foreign exchange, and other non-full-time students will not be calculated in the determination of class rank as of, when's the date?
Is it 2024?
2024.
Okay.
June of 2024.
Okay.
Or the year of 2024, that needs to be stipulated.
Yes, I agree.
We probably should, I think it was the class of 2024.
Yep.
The class.
So add to the end of the last line of the policy, homeschool, foreign exchange, and other non-full-time students will not be calculated in the determination of class rank. But that's now. And class rank will be eliminated as of the class of 20, or?
Yes, I mean, I think, as of right now, they are not, they're, those students who are identified, homeschool, foreign exchange, and other non-full-time students, they are not.
Yeah, they're not, okay.
Say the word eligible, but they're not considered for, you know, a full-time class rank and for that status. And I think going forward, we'll go to the Latin system, you know, that's a different conversation, but that's a good question that's been brought up.
The line, a student, parent, guardian will be notified in writing when there's a change in the student's full-time status. I have a very sneaky child, and if he were to receive in writing, say that he cut out some classes from his schedule, he would not hand that paper to me. Do we have any responsibility to the families to notify the families, like the parents and guardians specifically?
So it should say a student and parent slash guardian shall be notified?
I think that that would.
I mean, that occurs? I don't, you wanted to be more specific in how it occurs?
Yeah, just in guaranteeing that, like, it's not. Just in guaranteeing that, like, it's not just the student that receives the information that a parent or guardian is contacted to some degree.
But to a point of a student turns 18, that does change at the high school?
All right.
But I agree with her. As a parent, I really think that parents and guardians ought to be notified by the school when students drop enough classes that they're no longer full-time students. And I think there's probably a legal requirement that you do that anyways because RSA 189, what, I forget which number.
I wouldn't before you.
189 something requires that students be full-time students until they're 18. Like, it's very clear. I used to have it when, handed it out when kids were not going to school because that made a difference. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Well, if you want to clear that up, you could say a student, parent, guardian will be notified until the student is of the age of 18.
Yep.
In writing, phone call, or email.
Yeah.
And just add all that in so you cover every base. So then this way, I mean, I don't have any kids in school, but my kids used to, I guess, forge my handwriting, I've been told in later life, you know.
I did that too.
My daughter, I guess, got my handwriting, so that's why now you can't tell how I signed my name because of her.
All right.
It covers everything.
All right. So on, this is, excuse me, this is paragraph three now. We're going to say a student and parent guardian will be notified in writing when there is a change in the student's full-time status.
Can you repeat what you said before, Ms. Johnson?
You're right.
If you can remember it.
I said a student, parent, and guardian up to the age of 18 will be notified either in writing, email, or phone calls.
How about, yeah, I think we need to say, because students will be notified in writing either way, parents and guardians will be notified in writing up until students turn 18, right? Can we still notify parents after the students turn 18? Like, if you turn 18 and you're only a junior, do we just not communicate with the parents anymore?
I mean, it's not best policy. I think there certainly should be come to the table, but some of those decisions are legally made, you know, at that point when a student turns 18.
Right.
They can make that decision on their own.
Okay.
In a perfect world, we want, you know, all of those people as part of that decision-making process.
I would say they can make that decision of their own. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't still inform them.
Well.
Like, if we're not legally exempt from informing a parent or guardian.
Not unless the student and parent come to an agreement in writing that the parent would be allowed to be notified. And they would have to come to the meeting of the minds, and it would have to be in writing because if not.
We've got FERPA.
Yeah. We can't do it anymore.
Okay.
But I would put that writing, email, or by phone call up to the age of 18.
What about the student and their parent slash guardian, and then in parentheses, if applicable?
Student and parent guardian. I can't spell guardian. G-U-A, not A-U, Heather. Guardian. The student and parent guardian.
The student and their parent slash guardian, if applicable, shall be notified.
Yeah. I think instead of if applicable, we can put in parentheses for students under the age of 18.
Minor students.
I don't care whether it's students under 18 or minor students. Does anyone have strong feelings? And then will be notified. I like just in writing. I hesitate to put like in phone call and by phone and email. We know students have email addresses because we give them to them, but we don't know the status of other things. I mean, most people have a phone, but I don't want to set people up to not be able to, I don't want to end up in a situation where, like, we have an educational neglect situation and DCYF gets into a position where they're like, well, we can't do anything about this because you didn't call them. Like, do you know what I mean? And I've seen some of these cases, like, fizzle out for silly reasons like that outside of the child's best interest.
I mean, it's certainly best practices to have it in writing. That way you have a paper trail.
Yeah.
But email is in writing too.
It is, yep.
So, you know, when you say in writing, so is it going to be a hand paper snail mail or sent home with the student that might never reach the parent? Or you're going to do, back yourselves up with an email?
Mr. Poska, do you know what the current procedure is? Like, our current practice, do we also call the parent and say?
Yes, there's also meeting them. In most cases, there's also a formal meeting with all the parties at the table to.
Okay.
Discuss this going forward.
Then I'm cool with the saying and phone. In writing and via phone. Okay. So that's that line. Paragraph three, the student and their parent or guardian for students under the age of 18 will be notified in writing and via phone when there is a change in the student's full-time status. I'm just going to put ellipses there and she can figure that out. And then the last line, should we just take that line out since we're not doing class rank? Should we say through the class of, or should we say class rank will no longer be calculated after the, beginning with the class of 2025, class rank will no longer be calculated? And then the next line will be homeschooled, foreign exchange, and other non-full-time students will not be calculated in the determination? Would that cover both of them by just slipping in that?
So in, do we have any policy that also covers this? Like, for homeschooled students, foreign exchange students, does it say in their policies whether they'll be in, calculated in class rank or not? Because if it's already listed, then we could just get rid of it.
No, this is the only one, I think. What's the next one? Yeah.
This way, if you put that in there, you don't have to go back to the policy.
Yep.
In 2025. It's done, it's clarified.
Yep.
And you can wait another 10 years after, I guess.
Right. If we miss it again.
Yep.
We don't. So, okay. So add to, not the end of the last line, just before the last line. Just before the last line. Beginning with the class of 2025, right? Because 2024 is still having it, but 2025 is not. Class rank will no longer be calculated. And then we'll have the last line. Period. And then dot, dot, dot. Okay. So based on those changes of really clarifying who and how we are going to contact people when kids aren't taking a full course load and the, being very clear about class rank ending in 2025, I would like to move to send these edits to the full board.
Second.
Hold on, I have to write it down properly. I'm moving to send it to the board with, as amended. All in favor of sending this to the board, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. I am keeping an eye on the time. We still have half an hour to go. We are doing really well, even getting into the meat of some of these. So, good for us. Okay. IKF. IKF is long. We last looked at this only five, well, I guess, six years ago almost, in February of 2017. And you can see that there's quite a bit of red. And part of the red is regarding changes that we made to class rank and GPA. This is where we really get into the nitty-gritty about our LADE system that we voted on. And then it also pulls in the new information from RSA 18911, which is the U.S. citizenship and naturalization information. And it adds, something else it adds, oh, the science, the new science requirements. And math, too. I think we have new math requirements. Is that from the state or just from us?
That's from us.
That's from us. Good for us. Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I know there was, there's a lot of changes in this policy.
If I could just add, it also kind of details going to the Latin system in there, as well as one of the requirements that has come up from the state is a requirement to have students file a, or process for students to file a student FAFSA.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about the FAFSA. And so it used to be that you only applied for the FAFSA if you were applying, like, it was part of the process of applying to colleges. And one of the great things that Nashua does is we have File of FAFSA nights here at North and also at South where students and their families can come and get assistance filling out that paperwork. I know when I worked with foster children, we would have like a big, we'd make a meet, we'd make an evening of it. We'd like, you know, get Subway or McDonald's or whatever, and then we'd all troop down here to file FAFSA's together. And it's really helpful because they're very, in my opinion, it's not an intuitive form and it takes, it takes quite a bit. So, does anyone have any questions or comments on that? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. I know the parents came in here worried about scholarships. With this new system, are they, how is the scholarships going to be working with the academic awards for these classes? Will they be able to apply for scholarships the same way that they did when we had the, my mind went blank here, when we had the old system with the?
Absolutely.
Yes. And if you look on page one at the bottom.
Yep.
Where it says academic awards, it's very clear what the grades are that you need to have in order to get the, those academic awards. So knowing that, if you have summa cum laude, it means that you have gotten above a 3.75 in your GPA. It also, you can see here that we've got it broken down by year of graduating class because for 24, 25, and 26, we're still doing the weighted GPA.
Yes.
As parents had requested, and we're not starting the unweighted until the class of 2027. So.
So with the unweighted GPA, thank you, my mind went blank. I was, brought so much to the table with everything else, my mind went blank.
Yep.
So with the unweighted, this was the whole argument that night. With the unweighted GPA, are the scholarship, are they going to be eligible for scholarships the same way that they were before we took the weight away?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Silly little thing. Academic awards for the class of 2027, awards needs another A.
There's a typo. Okay. Thank you for catching that.
I always get excited when I catch silly things like that. I don't know why.
No, it's good. It's funny how you can look at something many times and miss it, and then someone else will be like, oh, it's right there. So, that's great.
I see here that the, one of the red lines is students must pass the U.S. citizenship and naturalization exam. Is that the same exam that like a person would take becoming a U.S. citizen?
Yes.
Yes.
And this is new?
This is state law now, yes.
State law.
I love that. I've always thought that, you know, if it's a test that we require an adult to take to become a citizen, then kids should absolutely be able to take it and pass it.
When are we offering that exam? Is that going to be part of like the SAS process? Is it something that they take as soon as they finish U.S. history? Like, how is the school addressing that?
Because of the length of the exam, parts of it are being chunked out.
Okay.
Over the course of the history experience, which will also allow students to, you know, it's not a one-shot deal. Gives them time to, if they weren't successful, they can kind of return to it and take it again.
Okay.
There's, you know, Ms. Hackett, Ms. Kootu at the high school level has been a great job putting this in place along with the history teachers because there's a significant amount of documentation now that has to go with this to follow through.
Okay. Question about that. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Lambert.
I was just wondering how the school is communicating this with the parents so that any parents that happen to be immigrants might not be, might, will be a little bit less nervous perhaps of their kids taking it?
I'm not quite sure to be, to be honest with you. It is part of this, you know, it is part of the course requirements now when they're taking it. So I'm assuming, you know, if, if, let's say your child's in the history course in grade seven, you know, in grade 11, you know, going to the parent night back, that's part of the syllabus that we're doing that. It's not a standalone per se, it is kind of embedded into the core instruction.
And every student is now taking that U.S. history course, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Does anyone have any other questions on IKF or any other edits that they noticed? Nope? Okay. Then I move that we send IKF to the full board with that typo corrected.
Second.
Sorry, I have to write that all down. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next one is a sister policy. It's really a form, but I think we should include it because it very clearly shows everybody exactly what we're looking for when we're deciding whether or not someone is able to get the core diploma. It makes it very clear to families and guidance and everyone what we're looking at. Does anyone have any questions on that one? It hasn't changed since 2008. Okay. So I move that we send IKF-r to the full board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Oh, we're still doing, all right. All right. So the next policy is JFABD. This policy doesn't have a lot of changes. We looked at it back in 2020. And this policy is regarding our McKinney-Vento students, I'm sorry, McKinney-Vento is the state law, state law, the federal law governing students who are unhoused or unaccompanied. And so we've changed the title a little bit to make it, I just like the words better. And I know I talked to Ms. Darling about that a little bit. And then there's an accompanying policy that goes with it, the JFABD-r. And that's really why we pulled this policy because the R policy had the incorrect contact information on it. So, does anyone have any questions or concerns about JFABD? Yes? Go ahead, Ms. Lambert.
So when I was reading through it, I noticed that it says that the school is, has to, has to provide transportation if reasonable. And I didn't know if the school is not legally obligated to apply, to provide transportation in every situation.
So the school is not obligated to provide transportation for high school students in general. We're not. We do. I'm not aware of any cases where the school doesn't provide transportation. The only times I have been aware of there being issues with transportation is with students who are placed out of district significantly, and then the school districts and judges sit down and discuss who's going to do the busing or the driving of a student from, like, say, a foster home far away.
Okay.
Back to school, or if they need to switch districts.
Okay. So that, all right, so I understand why it was, it's a nail like that now. Thank you.
Did I miss anything?
No. You referred to the last sentence there at the bottom, the district will make reasonable efforts.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're entitled to transportation, you know, where there are students who may be under this law, under this policy, and they live in Manchester. So we're transporting them to and from Manchester because we have their homes, you know, they've chosen to attend school here in Nashua. I think, you know, sometimes if they, you know, if there's a situation where they might be really close to the, to the school in general, they might not need. be really close to the, to the school in general, they might not need transportation, so to the extent feasible, you know, we want students in some type of transportation for, you know, almost two hours going from a school. I don't know if that's what's in the student's best interest, so that's some of the conversations that this team has, when they're making the determination of what is in the best interest of those students.
Okay, all right, that sounds good, thanks.
I remember when I worked for DCYF, we used to have, like, a, you know, a running pool of people that, like, who lives in Milford that can pick up a child and bring them to Nashua, and, you know, who's able to take a child from, you know, Nashua over to Salem at, you know, 6 o'clock in the morning while this process is in effect and schools get going with, you know, getting their own transportation setup. So any other questions on this? No? And I agree with you, we need to be making sure that these kids have school as a consistent force in their lives. So I move that we send JFABD to the full board for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm an aye, too. Okay. And then JFADBR, I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion that we send that one to the full board as well, and you'll see that the contact person has been updated. It's the same number, but it's a new person, and we decided to take the name out in case it changes, so that you just call this position at that number. So on the motion, oh, do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm an aye as well. And the last one is policy KA, which is school, community, home relations. This one says we haven't touched it since 2008, but I feel like it came before this committee sometime in the last few years, and we kind of went around, and then we did, we did a different policy. KE or KEB got updated, but not this one. So now we're back to this one. We added guardians. When we say parents, we also now say guardians, because we know that we have a lot of students living in various family situations, and that's really the only change. Anyone have any questions or concerns about this one?
Oh, ma'am.
Ms. Lampier?
No.
No? Okay, so I move that we send KA to the full board.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Three aye. Okay, so for next time, I have IHAK on my list of things to follow up on, and then we'll continue to go down the list. I didn't bring my notebook with me, for no reason at all, I was just rushing out the door, so I don't have my other kind of ongoing list of potential policies. Do you have any previews for us tonight?
I was able to do some work over the snow days I was chipping away at, so I think, I think we'll be in touch. We've done some work, I think it's a matter of, couple we have to follow up on that I have out to some of the other staff to check on. So again, I think it's trying to keep the reasonable number, and again, if there's some, if we think there's going to be some discussion with some of those, I'm going to try to kind of condense maybe the numbers that we're talking about. But I thought, you know, the numbers we had today, we were able to have some good discussion and get through a lot, so I'm trying to keep that balanced with you and Ms. Darling. I think we, we had a pretty good feel for where we were bringing forward to this meeting tonight.
Okay, great. Oh, and we should mention that, so Ms. Darling was interested in how the policy agenda gets set. So Ms. Darling sat in on the meeting that Mr. Poska and I have, we have a meeting monthly about a week or two before the policy committee, so Ms. Darling sat in on that to see kind of what we do behind the scenes. We did not, we were very, very careful not to have any substantive discussions, because we were, we have to be careful of the right to know law, because in committees, a quorum is two, so we can't discuss the policies, all we can say is, like, this is the policy, and let Mr. Poska kind of handle most of that.
And I do have a whole thing that I want to say at the full board about it, but honestly, it was so cool getting to see Mr. Poska and Tara were both, like, describing how, like, one policy affects another, which affects another, and this whole, like, waterfall effect that just one law change can have. And it's amazing to see all these little things that they're doing behind the scenes that nobody would pick up on, you know, formatting things difference, differently, adding the legal reference disclaimers, like, those little tiny changes that have to be made, and these guys are doing all this, this work for it. And I highly recommend, if you get the chance, to sit in on one and see, it was very educational.
Yep, it is, it's interesting. I mean, it's a little awkward, because we do some of the wordsmithing, like, some of the editing we did tonight, we try and do some of that in the meetings, and obviously we can't, because that would be a violation of the right to know law. So, but it was really cool, and, I mean, hats off to Ms. Consella for all the work she's doing with the formatting, because we've discovered that the format that we had been using, there's like a gray bar at the top, is not ADA compliant, and it's difficult to search. So she is, as every policy we pull up, whether we make changes to it or not, she has to change the formatting to update it so that it's ADA compliant and searchable with our website. So that's, it's, it's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that I don't think she gets the kudos for that she deserves, so. That's all I've got. So I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. I guess I'll second it. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we are adjourned at 6:31 PM. Thanks, guys.